Okay, let me call this regular meeting of the Board of Public Safety to order. For the record, today is Wednesday, August 6, 2025. We have commissioners attending in person this evening, and we have a quorum. So for the record, we have Commissioner Young, Commissioner McElroy, Commissioner Benedetto, Commissioner McLeod, and Commissioner Battle. Before we get into the agenda, could we kindly stand and pitch back? Okay, the first item on the agenda this evening is a public comment. I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Go moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And I heard Commissioner McLeod. All in favor? Any opposed? Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the commission this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to go right into item number two. With regard to a police department promotions, I will entertain a motion from the floor regarding personnel promotions, following the recommendation of Chief Baldwin. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to promote Detective Madeline Jolamino to the rank of sergeant.
Thank you. Motion is made by Commissioner McLeod. Do I have a second?
Go moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. Motion is made and seconded. Do we have any questions or comments? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm going to turn this over to the chief for the pinning.
Good evening. On behalf of our mayor, the Honorable Eleanor Carbone, Board of Public Safety Commissioners Darlene Battle, Tyler Young, Joe McElroy, Glenn McLeod, Doug Benedetto, and Greg Cogswell, Deputy Chief Barone and I welcome you to this small promotion ceremony honoring a well-qualified and deserving candidate worthy of this promotion and the next step of her distinguished career. Thank you for being here today, especially the family, friends, colleagues, and officers who have joined us this evening. I also want to recognize Madeline's mom, Carmen Trashera, I think I got that right, who is here this evening to celebrate her daughter's historic accomplishments. Welcome, ma'am. While this is an exciting moment related to a promotion, I don't want to take away the joy associated with this evening. It seems only fitting that we remember the loss of one of our own. This evening's ceremony unfortunately comes in a somewhat somber tone in that this promotion serves as a replacement for a dear friend, colleague, and outstanding supervisor who we lost back in April of this year. As a memento of heartfelt respect for the recent passing of Sergeant Nicholas Luteri, I would like us all to stand and share a brief moment of silence as we remember Nick and the service that he provided to the city of Torrington. I can say Nick would be very proud of the person who's taking on that supervisory rank, Madeline. Today marks an exciting chapter in the Torrington Police Department's history in which the Board of Safety has promoted an outstanding and well-qualified individual to the rank of sergeant. What makes this historic is that Detective Madeline Jolamino is the very first female promoted at the supervisory ranks of the Torrington Police Department and as a supervisor. Being promoted within the ranks of any law enforcement agency is an earned position that reflects the years of hard work, sacrifice, integrity, and dedication to the profession that one so loves. Promotions are not given, they are earned. And this evening Detective Jolamino earned this promotion to sergeant after having demonstrated that she is ready to lead at the next level. Her new title as sergeant comes with a greater responsibility as she steps into her new role. As a sergeant, she will be accepting the weight of making tough decisions that many times will be unpopular and go against the grain. You will be looked to not just for direction and instruction, but for inspiration, which I know you will accomplish without prejudice. The decisions that you make will be made to uphold the highest standards of this profession. As I conclude, myself and Deputy Chief Barone offer our heartfelt congratulations and look forward to serving this department and community with you. Once again, Deputy Chief Barone and I want to thank you for all of you being here this evening and for your continued support of our department. As we move forward, Deputy Chief Barone is going to give a description of the sergeant's rank and responsibility.
A Torrington Police Sergeant is a supervisor who is traditionally assigned to supervise a shift or specialized unit. A sergeant answers to a lieutenant who is the commanding officer of a shift or specialized unit. A sergeant at times acts as the officer in charge of a shift in the absence of the patrol shift commander, and at times assumes the role of acting lieutenant. A sergeant is recognized by the three stripes on the sleeve of the police uniform and chevrons on the collar of their shirt. It has been accurately argued that the sergeant's rank is the most important rank in a police organization. Sergeant is the first-line supervisor and first step in the chain of command. In addition to the responsibilities of supervising personnel on a shift or within a specialized unit, sergeants ensure that department policies and procedures are followed. They teach, instruct, and guide personnel to better perform their duties. They are personally responsible and accountable for the performance of all employees under their immediate control, including monitoring of their use and discretion. They supervise the collection and preservation of evidence for court presentation and beyond, and respond to various calls for service, offering advice and direction to patrolmen as they interact with the public. They assist in coordinating department activities and representing the department and city at meetings with other law enforcement agencies and organizations. This is just a short description of the sergeant's many duties and responsibilities.
Detective Jolamino, could you stand next to us, please? It is my pleasure this evening to introduce to you Detective Madeline Jolamino, who has just been promoted by the Board of Public Safety to the rank of sergeant. Sergeant Jolamino is a 22-year veteran of the Torrington Police Department and has been assigned as a detective in the department's detective division for the past 12 years. As part of her duties as a detective, she has successfully investigated or assisted in serious investigations that consist of homicides, sexual assaults, home invasions, burglaries and robberies, cybercrimes, crimes against children, serious physical assaults, kidnappings, and arson, to name a few. Prior to her promotion to detective in 2013, she was assigned to the Torrington Police Department's Narcotics Unit and later assigned as the first school resource officer at the Torrington High School. She has been a member of the KATE Team, which stands for the Connecticut Multidisciplinary Child Abuse Investigation Team, where she uses her expertise in interviewing children who are victims of physical and sexual abuse. She is also a member of the Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force and is a member of the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. Sergeant Jolamino is bilingual, speaking and reading Spanish, and has responded to calls for service that has fostered relationships within the Spanish-speaking community of our city. Sergeant Jolamino has a Bachelor's in Science degree in criminal justice from the Interamericana University of Puerto Rico, as well as numerous professional improvement certifications and trainings. Sergeant Jolamino has received departmental awards consisting of Exceptional Duty Medal, which he successfully investigated kidnapping and sexual assault of a juvenile that led to an arrest of the accused. She also received a second Exceptional Duty Medal for her involvement in disarming a male suspect that had the intention of killing his girlfriend. She was also recognized by the Torrington Lodge of Elks in 2024 for her exceptional service to the citizens of the city of Torrington, having received an award for that honor. Additionally, Sergeant Jolamino has been an active member and advisor for the Torrington Police Cadet Program and has been extremely influential in organizing the Special Olympic Torch Run for the city of Torrington that includes the run itself, as well as fundraising activities and for the Connecticut Special Olympics. She's also a member of the Torrington Police Department Honor Guard at one time, and she's also a member of the Spotty Dog Rescue, in which she has fostered at-risk dogs that had needed a home. She also volunteers for several police-related community events and charity drives. Sergeant Jolamino's new assignment will be the patrol supervisor assigned to the evening shift. Her new badge number will be 315. It is again my great pleasure to introduce to you this evening Sergeant Madeline Jolamino. Will the mayor come forward and administer her oath of office, please?
Do you intend to bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America, the state of Connecticut, and the city of Torrington, and that you will uphold the constitutions and the laws thereof, that you will faithfully and impartially discharge according to law the duties of the office of sergeant and the police force of the city of Torrington, and in doing so, read, obey, and be bound by the rules and regulations of this department
At this time, we'll have the pinning of her badge, I believe, forest blue. Are you pinning the badge tonight? No? Okay. It is our honor to have Maddie's husband, Darren Jolamino, who is a federal law enforcement officer with our government, to be having the honor bestowed upon him to pin the badge
Chief, did you want to do the completion of probationary period now also?
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course.
Okay. Okay. So, thank you, Commissioner McLeod, for suggesting we move item number five up next. So, with the Board of Safety members' permission, I will entertain a motion to accept Officer Nicole Mueller as a regular member of the Torrington Police Department after completing her probationary period effective August 5, 2025.
Go moved.
Second.
I heard Commissioner Benedetto. I heard Commissioner McLeod. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Back to you, Chief.
Before we close, I just want to briefly recognize our Explorer Program and the cadets that are here this evening to honor Madeline. Madeline has done an incredible job, along with Officer Fay and Officer Gallagher, as advisors to our cadet program. And it's wonderful to see you all here to support Maddie in this incredible moment for her and for the history of our department. So, thank you all for being here. It's really great. So, this concludes our small ceremony. Again, we appreciate everybody that had come here to support Madeline. We thank, of course, our mayor and the Board of Safety and the City Council for their continued support of the Torrington Police Department, and we're just very, very grateful for everybody to come out here. Thank you very much, and have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. I know, why don't we just take a few minutes, and that way anybody who wants to grab some quick photographs or wants to exit before we get into the more boring stuff of our meetings? All right. Thank you all for, Board members, for your patience, and to those members of the departments that are still here in the room. Thank you all. Let's move on in our agenda items. We are now looking at Agenda Item 4. So, I'll take this in the five parts that it is written in. I will entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes on May 7, 2025.
Go moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. Second by Commissioner Young. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
And then a extension for the record is Commissioner McLeod. For B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special budget meeting minutes from May 7, 2025.
Go move.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, and Commissioner Young. Are there any questions or comments? If not, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You better abstain again.
All right. I have two abstentions on this one, Commissioner Benedetto and Commissioner McLeod. Item 4C, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special meeting minutes from June 9, 2025.
Go move.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto and Commissioner Young. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For the record this time, it is Commissioner Battle that is abstaining. Item 4D, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special meeting minutes from June 17, 2025.
Go moved.
Second.
Commissioner Benedetto. Second by Commissioner Young. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And item 4E, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special meeting minutes from July 23, 2025.
Go move.
Commissioner Benedetto. Second by Commissioner Young. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're going to now move into item 6 because we did move item 5 up. So, item 6, I will entertain a motion to approve the extension of bid number PDU 023082322 with Fairfield Uniform Company of Bridgeport, Connecticut, for the purchase of police department uniforms for fiscal year 2526 in an amount not to exceed $55,000. Funding is available on the police department's uniform allowance line item in the FY 2526 police budget, and the City Council did, in fact, approve this motion already.
Go moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, and second by Commissioner Young. And are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 7, I'll entertain a motion to accept Police Chief Baldwin's reports for April, May, June, and June of 2025.
Go moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto and Commissioner Young. Questions?
Chief, just on the unpaid parking fines, are we making any ground with that?
On the parking ticket?
Realistically, not at this point, Commissioner. We're actually, and I spoke to the mayor about what we're going to do is, because it goes back almost 20 years in some situations, we're looking at, we're going to talk with Corporation Council, we're going to figure out a date to eliminate, to cut them, and start from there. We don't have the records that we used to have, that we have now for those parking tickets from many years past. So, and many of those people, we know, have been deceased and have moved out of the city. But we are, Sergeant Baldwin continues to, and our clerical staff in the Traffic Division continues to do their best to collect these fines.
So, are we tied into motor vehicle like the tax office?
We're going to be. We are. Yeah, we are. Yes.
And there's going to be a new program that went through the budget, T2, which will also assist in hopefully holding people accountable for these fines.
Yeah, it just keeps climbing.
And I think that when it shows that amount, as the chief had mentioned, it's artificially inflated because there's a certain amount of that is absolutely uncollectible. It's beyond any collection deadline where you can forgive those. And from a municipal auditing perspective, you know, you don't want to carry on bad debt. So, or bad collections, I guess is a better way to say it.
It doubles and triples after certain periods of time. And just as an informational, the ordinance committee and the City Council just approved a new traffic-related ordinance as it relates to fines associated with parking downtown and metered parking, which increases those fines as well.
Have we looked at outside agencies to collect our debt?
We have in the past, yeah, but it hasn't been effective.
Okay.
Chief, I just have one quick, simple question. Do we have a couple, do we have some DUI grants a couple months ago? I just noticed an awful lot of DUIs in a couple months, and I just wondered, was it grants or something going on in town?
It's a combination of grants and patrol out there. A lot of DWI-related accidents. Deb, do you have any other?
Yeah, so we're part of, we have a, it's a year-long, we reapply for the grant for DUI enforcement. So, you're looking at every weekend and holidays, things like that, out the way the grant's written out to meet the state's requirements. You know, also too, there's, we have the Rural Road Speed Grant that's going on. That's a significant grant, and so guys are getting stuff off of those too. So, there's, you know, we're using the grants for a lot of traffic enforcement, so that's why you're going to see the increase.
Thank you.
Other questions for the chief on his reports? Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 8, I'll entertain a motion to accept interim Fire Chief Tripp's reports for April, May, and June, 2025.
Go moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. Second by Commissioner Young. Questions or comments?
Deb, I just have a couple questions about overtime. Starting in April is 81,000, May is 74, I mean, May is 84,000, June is 73,000. Do you have a plan to keep, we can lower that overtime?
Well, yes, Commissioner. Right now, back in those dates, I had a battalion chief out on an injury for about two or three months. I have a recurred comp injury kind of the same time, and I have a military leave injury, and he's been out for about six months now. So, those are all vacancies that have to be filled. So, that's a lot of the spike of the overtime. Some of the overtime, I think it was in June, was our hazmat tech refresher. That's 16 hours for our hazmat techs, about 30 guys out of the 50. We're short-staffed right now. We're down to 53. And with the one guy on military leave, 52, then we should be around 59. So, but contractually, we just, we keep, we're at minimum. So, any times some takes time off, and in the summertime, a lot of vacation's going on, we have to backfill that overtime slot.
Do we have a plan moving forward?
Right now, no. Until I hire guys to fill those, you know, get up to 12 and 13 guys on a shift. So, right now, we're down, you know, the budget's 55 and a half this year, and we're at 53 right now. You know, there's one guy that's on military, so he's still with us. We can't hire for him, but...
Where do you stand on the budget?
He's not costing us anything either. So, he's not getting paid while he's not on the military. The military owns him. So, that salary coming back for the time he's out, you know, that'll be in our regular wages budget.
And how much were we over budget last year? Do you remember?
I don't have it with me. Actually, I just talked to Erica.
What did we budget this year, do you remember?
487,000, maybe?
And we're at 240.
And that was based at full staff. So, right.
And how does July look?
So, the battalion chief's back to work, my comp injury's back to work. So, the only guy that we have off is a military guy, and we're trying to figure out, get a date. He's kind of, the army's kind of stringing him along a little bit. So, we're trying to get a date when, you know, he's eager to come back, but, because he's missing all of his pay. The army doesn't match what we pay. So, he's eager to come back. So, it's looking better. It depends on the vacation. I have to look at the vacation outlook to see, you know, what officers are going to be off. Should start seeing a lower, as each month pays time.
The over budget.
Right.
In two months. Okay. Thank you.
Just for anybody that's listening or for anybody in the public, so July 1 is the beginning of the FY 26. And the FY 26 is the year we've budgeted the 436 or 86?
487, I believe.
487, yeah. So, yeah, a fair amount of work to do. But I think the only thing that I would also add for anybody that's listening is when we are down staff like that, there are actually vacancies. There are those vacancy savings in the salary line item, and at the end of the year is usually when we do that, you know, that transfer of actual salaries into the overtime line item to help defray some of that. So, other questions for Chief Tripp?
The new fire truck, where do we stand there?
I can give it to you now, or I can give it to my report. I'll leave it up to you. Want to hear about it now?
Oh, yeah, when you're ready.
Okay. It's my report. Thank you.
All right. If there are no questions on the three reports before you all call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We'll look for item 9. I'll entertain a motion to accept the EMS provider activity report. Again, this is for April, May, and June, 2025.
Go moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. Second by Commissioner Young. All in favor? Excuse me. Any questions? No questions? Going once? Going twice? I'm calling it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, we'll go into the item 10. Is there any business to be presented by the Policy Subcommittee? No? You want to make a motion to table this, then? All right. So, motion to table made by Commissioner McLeod. Do I have a second? Is there a second to table this?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner McElroy, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we can talk further about the Policy Subcommittee. I know there's been so much before this board in the last two months. I can certainly understand how maybe a Subcommittee hasn't been able to meet because of the search committee and all that other work that you're doing, but we could talk and get back online with that. So, all right, we're going to move into item number 11. I will entertain a motion to consider business by the Volunteer Fire Department.
Go moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. Second by Commissioner McLeod. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There he is. Come on up, Chief.
Good evening, members. Good evening, mayor. First, I want to thank DC Tripp for coming to our annual dinner, holding our swearing-in ceremony for our new officers and our new office members, administrators. So, thank you for coming and representing the Torrington Fire Department for that. Obviously, I haven't reported in front of you for a couple months now, so my report includes April, May, and June. During that time, we're responding to 50 calls for service. We've made all 50 of those. We've also done, completed a cumulative total of 245 and a half training hours between our members and 122 work detail hours. We wrapped up our fiscal year, so we count between January 1 and December 31, but also kind of a mid-year assessment between our fiscal year is June 30 to, I'm sorry, July 1 to June 30. So, between that time, we've responded to 187 calls for service, which is, we responded to that with a 99.4% reliability rate. We only missed a single call. That volume is a 61% increase from the prior fiscal year. Our busiest month was November 2024, which I'm sure all of you recall was a crazy brushfire season. During that month, we responded almost daily with our brush truck and apparatus throughout the city. During that time period, we've completed 530 hours of cumulative total work detail hours and 936 cumulative training hours. We focused on recruitment and retention during that time period. It was a success. We've recruited six new firefighters. We have also two explorers, which we hope are going to stay with us, and we can work them into the ranks long-term. Right now, we have, updating my totals, 23 total members, 18 on the fire side. 10 of those are interior, with the rest exterior. We have three planning to go to the Fire One program starting next week. So, we're looking forward to that, and looking forward to the... And looking forward to the next year, our, our, our goal at this point is retention of those members and driver training, trying to get all our members up to spec on our brush truck, our tanker and our engine to make sure we continue on that reliability rate throughout the year. And lastly, I'll be remiss if I didn't mention Friday, this Friday, we'll be doing our car show, first annual car show. So that'll be here on Main Street and we'll, we hope to see you all there.
Thank you, chief. Are there any questions? We look forward to seeing you Friday.
Thank you.
All right, I know that Torringford is not quite dissolved and we continue to work towards the goal of taking property. Any comment, anything you want to say? Okay. We do appreciate that you're here, though. Thank you. Yeah. All right, well then, with that said, I'm going to move into item twelve. And I will entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Second.
Benedetto, second by Commissioner Young. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? To you, Chief Baldwin.
Good evening again. Just want to congratulate Officer Robert Geida, who retired back in July after twenty-four years of dedicated service to our community. Very glad, very glad that he's happy and enjoying his retirement. But he's a, he'll be a big loss to us. He did a great job for our department. We lost a, an officer to Wilkett PD back in July. We're down nine right now. We have several in the academy right now and several on FTO. Last night was our national night out. I want to thank the Board of Safety Commissioners who attended that event. Council people, Rouette, Spino, Cavanero and Ivane attended the national night out, which was very great to see. Board of Safety members Benedetto and Commissioner Battle were out with us and Commissioner McGelroy hosted a neighborhood event. Also, probate judge Jim Steck was with us last night as well. And we visited seven neighborhoods throughout the evening. Very well received and it was just a very good community policing event. Next year, we're going to do this a little bit differently. We're going to have a centralized location, potentially maybe at Franklin Square to be the, the location for the next, next year's national night out. Our cops and kids event is scheduled for tomorrow night at Bessie Pond, starts at four o'clock. That's a PAL, PAL-related event. Hoping that you can attend that. And as the chief mentioned, tomorrow or Friday evening is the, the car show downtown. On the emergency management side, myself and Deb, Chief Tripp, we reviewed the regional shelter up at the middle school back in July and attended a regional tabletop exercise at Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, which was back in July as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, chief. Any questions? None. Deputy chief, anything to add?
I just want to say, well, it was another good national night out. It's good to, you know, get out and see everybody and we try to bounce around as many places as we can. Unfortunately, we don't make them all, but we do the best we can and hope everybody comes, hope everybody comes out tomorrow, cops and kids. It's a good time and see everybody there.
Thank you, Tiffany. Questions? Chief Tripp?
Mayor, thank you, commissioners. I have a list tonight. We'll start with the vehicles. So I'll get through the new engine in a second, Commissioner. The truck one is down again. It's a computer issue and unfortunately, our vehicle maintenance doesn't have the proper tools to shoot that, so we're trying to get exactly what they need to do for, to diagnose the truck one better. Engine five just went down today. It's going into a high idle as his maxi brakes are applied. They shot that. They're going to bring that down for the first thing in the morning. I'm hoping to have that back first thing. They'll go right down and take care of that and have that right back. We're down two ladder trucks. Engine two is, is our ladder truck now. The new engine. So it's not in service yet. We loaded some hose today. Equipment's still being loaded on it and it's here right now. So after this meeting, if you want a quick little tour, Lieutenant Shasana, who's been instrumental, will answer all your questions, instrumental in this truck. And we have a sister truck engine too, which that's the engine two screw for the evening. Back in Battalion Chief O'Donnell. So they're here to answer all your questions and show you actually both trucks tonight that are from North End. So it's not in service yet. We're driver training today. We got to do some driver training. We're still loading equipment on it. And we're debating on engine one at this point. We may need to keep engine one depending how east side rolls because it does fit in Torrington's firehouse. So that's the, that's the vehicle report at this point. Congratulations to Fire Marshal Boceta and Battalion Chief Engel for twenty-nine years of service. They both retired. I walked in the door with both those individuals, along with Lieutenant Zavakai, who retired last year or the year before. So congratulations on their retirements after twenty-nine years. The Fire Marshal's office and along with the engine crews have been attending some summer camps. We helped out Parks and Rec up at their camp, Moe, summer camp. The kids love it when you go up there and they spray water and get all wet. And we did, we're doing the St. Paul's Church, the same thing, have a summer camp and they asked us to come up there. So we like participating with those with the kids and Fire Marshal's office asks for an engine crew. So we're doing that. I can't say enough about the volunteers. Drakeville is, you know, doing everything they can to support us. Their membership's increasing. They're responding. They want to respond. They're eager to respond. So with the Training Division in Drakeville and also the, the line, we're trying to get them more involved so people can put a name to a face. So, you know, and build that relationship like we had in the past to get them responding more. And Torrington, I just, I can't say enough about Torrington and what they're providing the city. We're instrumental in talks. I talked to Commissioner Potter at the Mountie all the time. Right now, as I give you, you know, the update Friday, the building is moving forward. We have the, all the titles. Trey down at vehicle maintenance is already, you know, starting to move those forward. They've inspected the vans. Next day, they have to bring on the squad sixteen to inspect that. So all the vehicles are kept in well shape. Very minor stuff, you know, some breaks on the van, that's about it. I'm talking to Trey. So he was actually excited for how old that van was and the shape that it's in, so. And that's going to be for the fire police. I've also talked to Chief Baldwin about the fire police. We have to sit down, have a meeting and figure out where that's going to sit, how it's going to sit and how it's going to be operated. So that's, it's a come in the future. Our EMS responses, we do monitor those. What I did pull us off of was what's called a thirty-three. It's an interfacility response. We're going to these healthcare facilities that have doctors and nurses there. And we're, you know, we're doing this depending on the call. If it's a difficulty breathing or whatever, cardiac we still go to, but those, those trigger things that we would go to normally for a house, they're under the care of a doctor or a nurse. So what's happening when training gets really jammed up and we're waiting for a car, we're stuck there for twenty minutes, thirty minutes sometimes between mutual aid and everybody coming. So what happens with the thirty-three, and I basically, this with LCD, a thirty-three is called in to dispatch by a doctor or a nurse. So it's a higher care than the paramedics. It's a higher care than what we provide. So they're in healthcare care. If it's called by a family member, we go. But those are only for transfers where the doctor are there, the doctor, the healthcare facility says, we need to transport this person to the hospital. So I put a squash to that because they're still under care of a doctor or a nurse in those calls. So that's going to alleviate, eliminate a lot of those calls where we're sitting there just basically doing nothing until the ambulance shows up. So I, we are looking at different calls to see if we are making a difference or not. And that's one call we did, we did remove ourselves from. My next step's to write a letter to the mutual aid departments. I have all their emails and their presidents to say that we are not going mutual aid to those calls either because they're in our doctor's hands. So we are, you know, continuing on that. Right now, I just wanted to just, just add, our department is changing. We have a lot of different leadership roles coming into play here. A new fire marshal, a new battalion chief, a new chief, new deputy chief. So this is an exciting time for our department. This is what kind of helps drive morale also. And I see some big changes happening. I see, I'm excited to be part of that change, no matter where I am, what scene, what role I'm in. So I, I see really good things happening with TFT in the future coming.
Thank you, chief. Are there any questions? Okay. Anything from Trinity tonight, Jeff?
Yes, I just wanted to talk about a cardiac arrest that we responded to along with the fire department. On the twenty-ninth of last month, we got dispatched for a male in cardiac arrest. When we arrived on the scene, we found a male with family bystander CPR. This was a particularly challenging call for our EMTs and paramedics in that this patient really had every rhythm that you can ever imagine that he presented with ventricular fibrillation, ventricular tachycardia. He was even in a rhythm called torsades, which is kind of a rare rhythm that does not respond to defibrillation, but needs actual medications to try to reverse that. This patient was defibrillated nine times during our care. At one point in time, we did get ROS, return of spontaneous circulation. And the patient was extremely bradycardic with a really slow heartbeat. So our paramedics had to pace him, external pacing, which is done with the same defibrillation pads, but just different placement of those pads in different jewel settings. He was transported down to St. Mary's because when you are pacing somebody, you're unsure of what the underlying rhythm is, if they're actually having a, a heart attack or not, a certain type of heart attack that they'd need a cardiac cath for, because you're actually producing that rhythm for them. He did go down to St. Mary's and was discharged on eight-three against medical advice. So hopefully, he kind of heeds his doctor's advice, but, you know, he walked out of there with no neurological deficits. So I want to thank the fire department for the assist for the Lucas device. Also want to thank paramedic field supervisor Ken Schaefer, paramedic Kyle Carney, EMT Jeremy Greenwood. And we also had Alexis Savage here that was in her field training program for our Hartford division, was actually, I believe, her first day on. So again, I just wanted to congratulate everybody, just did a phenomenal job and, you know, this guy owes his life to, to these folks. I also wanted to let you know that we have just purchased six new stretchers. Our stretchers obviously take a real beating. We purchased sick of the, six of the latest Power Pro Two stretchers. They're like thirty grand a piece. It's hard to believe a stretcher is that expensive, but, you know, these things are lighter and stronger. They've got lights on them. We've done a training on them, so we're going to be distributing amongst all of our locations. Also, last year, I talked about our video laryngoscopes. We had purchased five for every division. This year, in this fiscal year, Trinity purchased enough for all of our paramedic units, so whether that's a flycar or an ambulance. We have both glide scopes and McGrass. I carry a McGrass in my flycar. But again, these are, these really aid in intubation. They have a hyper-angulated blade, which really allows for you to intubate very, very difficult intubations. So we've done all the training on that and those are out in the streets right now, so. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, questions from the board, please?
Jeff, how's the recruiting? Are you having trouble hiring?
No, we're doing pretty well. I think we're down one. And I interviewed somebody the other day and put an offer out, so, you know, there's, obviously during vacation season, we're handing out a lot of overtime. There are some times where, you know, I'm covering the medic at night as well, so, but we're, we're doing well.
And you said thirty thousand dollars for them, stretchers?
Yeah.
What makes them so expensive?
That's a good question. I mean, they're.
You check Amazon?
Yeah, I know. Well, these particular stretchers, they even have a computer onboard, so, you know, when you, there's a load position for them when you load them in. And when they unload them, you're really supposed to have them in a lower, a lower position to keep them from tipping over and that, you know, you can actually download that to see what position they were if they did tip over. Thankfully, that almost never happens. But, yeah, they're basically a computer on wheels. They even, we have striker stretchers in all of our locations, but this newer one even uses a different battery. So it's kind of a logistical nightmare to be able to, you know, move batteries around. But, yeah, they're pretty impressive. They, they look heavier, but when you feel them, they're lighter. So I don't know, they're, I'm just a composite material that, everything in medicine is expensive, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, and congratulations on that life saved. You're right, you can only hope that he's listening to medical advice, but when he goes discharge himself without, yeah, that kind of draws a question. I know, yeah. All right, with that, I can move into item number thirteen. I will entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner Young. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll start on my left. Anything this evening, Commissioner Battle?
We actually enjoyed being a part of the national night out. We finally got to be a part of it, actually go around, because we're usually hosting, but we enjoyed meeting our neighbors across Torrington. Also want to congratulate, so I can say it right, Sergeant Giallini. I hope I'm saying it right, but I always call her Sergeant Maggie. Giallini. Okay, Sergeant Maggie, okay. But for her promotion, you know, she came to our class. The students really loved her. She's a great officer and we really appreciate her. We, I think that's it and I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McLeod?
Yeah, all I have is I'm just really happy to be the tiniest little part of Sergeant Joe Minos promotion. Great, pleased to see that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benedetto?
Yeah, just thank the chief and the deputy for national night out. It was a great event. It was nice visiting. You know, and one thing, I didn't hear any complaints about the police department, fire department. So it was, it was nice to hear good, good things, you know? And congratulations to the fire department and, and your paramedics and ambulance crew to save that guy's life. Those are the stories we need to hear.
Yeah.
People need to get it out and you need to hear those stories. Thank you.
You know, I have to, I just, before I call the next commissioner, I just have to pick up that. I agree with much less newspaper coverage in this area and social media always taking a different, you know, a different view of things. I agree. That's exactly what these meetings are designed to do. Celebrate those heroic events, you know, and celebrate what our, you know, our police officers and our firefighters are doing for the community. So I agree. I'm glad that you, I'm glad that you decided to highlight that.
And congratulate Fire Marshal Boceta and Battalion Chief Engel for their retirement. Oh, and Giallini, Detective Giallini.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McGelroy.
I want to see the new fire truck.
Yeah, I know. Before it's too dark out there.
I'd like to say thank you to Drakeville for all the work that they've been doing, supplemental to the city of Torrington. Trinity, obviously, for what you guys do, you're running all over the place. Fire department, police department, for everything that you do also. And the retirements of the police officer and the firefighters and national night out and obviously the sergeant's promotion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Young?
Just a congratulations to the newest sergeant. It's a big feat for our police department and I'm excited to see what she can do. She was great with the kids, so I'm excited for that.
Yeah. And the other thing I'm going to add to that is, again, just to reiterate what you heard from Chief Tripp, we are working with the Torrington Volunteer Fire Department Organization on getting a deed that transfers title to that property over to the city of Torrington. And hopefully, at the next Board of Safety meeting, we could do something that's a little bit more celebratory and we'll make sure that, that one newspaper. that's a little bit more celebratory and we'll make sure that, that one newspaper that might still cover us is actually here for that. So I'm going to move on to item number fourteen, so that we can all get out there and see that truck, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner Young, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned, thank you.